I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Womet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, October 24th, 2022. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Paling. John Caesaretti. Anne Hart.
Yeah.
Bonnie Kim. Frank Panzika.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes. Erin Stone.
Here.
We have Principal Kelly Jackson here with the High Crest Student Advisory Students to lead the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I'm going to have you guys come on up here. Chad. All right, so yeah, I'm here with some of our student advisory board members. Our student advisory board is a group of sixth grade student leaders who work with the administrative team, Mrs. Carlson really, to support schools' climate and culture at High Crest. They've only met once so far, but they're already excited and starting to brainstorm some ways to really connect between the grades and have talked about doing a video for fifth graders and doing partner homerooms, also some cleanups around the school and things like that, just to make High Crest even a better place than it already is. Each student was nominated by their homeroom teacher to be on this board of leaders, student leaders, and so we're really excited to have them here today to lead the pledge. So I'm going to have them introduce themselves and then tell who's homeroom they're in.
My name's Julia Limbrok. I'm in Mrs. Jansen's homeroom.
My name's Maddie Flocksbar. I'm in Ms. Zorker's homeroom.
My name is Grace McLaughlin, and I am in Barcha's homeroom.
My name is Maggie Wychorek, and I am in Ms. McFadden's room.
My name is Daniel Fernandez, and I'm in Ms. Everhart's homeroom.
My name is Jet Swanstrom, and I am in Ms. Bishop's homeroom. Now we will all rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being here. It's a huge honor to be nominated to do the work that you're doing, so I hope you're incredibly proud. I know we are, and we're really grateful for the work you're doing at High Crest. So thank you for everything you're doing and for being here. On your way out, I'm going to invite you to come over here so I can hand you a little something to thank you for the work you're doing and for being here, and then you can meet up with your families in the lobby. So thanks so much. Well done, students. An impressive way to get started. I'm proud of it. Before moving on, I'd love to draw your attention to the artwork behind us. The artwork on display was created by students enrolled in Mrs. Robin Scott's classes at the junior high. Eighth grade students used 35-millimeter cameras to take abstract photographs with black and white film, and the seventh grade students used Adobe Photoshop to create digital self-portraits. So take a look if you haven't already. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the September 19th, 2022 e-learning hearing, Board of Education Regular and Executive Session Meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the September 19th, 2022 e-learning hearing, Board of Education Regular and Executive Session Meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions? Hey, will the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart.
Here. Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Frank Panzika.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes. Erin Stone.
Yes.
Amy Paling.
Yes. Motion carries. So this is an opportunity for public comments. Are there any community members present who would like to speak? We'll move forward with board reports, starting with our committees. Mr. Panzika for Facility Development.
Thank you. The Facility Development Committee met on October 24th as part of the standing board committee at the whole meeting. The primary topic was the 2023 summer construction planning. Nicholas and Associates gave an update on the design, which is now 60% complete, and they found some things that were a little bit better shaped than they thought and some other things that they're still working on. They're making good progress on that, and they expect to have the next round for our next meeting, the next round of detail. They do need to look at pre-purchasing of equipment because the key products like chillers are backlogged and have to be ordered in significant time, so we're working through on the timeline to make sure that we've discussed ordering that any equipment that needs to be ordered with long lead times, some of which are 30 weeks, so require work this fall. The board also received a brief update on the state maintenance grant application. This is the State of Illinois outstanding grant for up to $50,000, and it's being applied for with the appropriate projects, and it should be relatively straightforward, but the grant, so who knows? And then finally, back to the concept of long lead time parts, the chiller for Mackenzie, which was way, way, way back, scheduled to be in in August, then moved to September, then October, then November, is now January. So these long lead time, relatively specialized parts do take quite some time. That's it for that committee.
Terrific. Thank you. And in Mr. Caesaretti's absence, I can share that the School Finance Committee also met on October 17th. Mr. Boltmeier provided the board with an update on the 2022 tax levy process and the status. The finalization of the 2021 tax extension by multiple agencies is a fluid process, but appears to have seen some positive developments in the last couple of weeks. This is very good news, which positively impacts the 2022 tax levy process and timeline. Thankfully, it appears the Cook County Assessors Office is on track for sending out the second installment tax bills in November. The board also reviewed current cash flows and short-term borrowing needs, with special attention to the Cook County Assessors updated timeline. A summary of monthly cash flows was provided, and based on this in-depth review, it does not appear that D-39 should need short-term borrowing as we have sufficient funds on hand to cover monthly expenses. I'll turn it to Mrs. Schneider-Fabes for strategy.
You. Strategy Committee also met as part of the October Committee at the Hall, and has been a welcome addition to our committee meetings. The board received two wonderful updates on the progress of our teams in implementing strategies and action steps of our strategic plan. This month, the board received an in-depth review of our district's SEL teacher and parent supports. Oh.
Microphone adjustment.
This report provided an overview of recently developed grade level objectives, curricular supports, assessment tools, parent supports, and resources for the District 39 social emotional learning framework, completed by the SEL Committee last year and through the summer. In addition, the board was provided a review of the efforts to support successful transitions from fourth to fifth grade for students and parents. The administrative team provided a short outline of transition supports that have been put in place as a result of the feedback gathered regarding the fourth to fifth grade transition last fall, and highlighted initial feedback gathered from these new structures for this year. Thank you to everyone for their hard work on these initiatives, as well as for the informative updates on progress. That's it.
Thank you very much. We'll move to liaison reports, starting with Mrs. Hart and CRC.
Great, thank you. I attended the CRC meeting here at the MECE on October 11th, which was their first meeting of the 2223 school year. Introductions were made and overview was provided on the top of the topic of focus this year, which will be neurodivergent learning. Neurodivergent learning will support the district's strategic goals, specifically number one, student achievement and growth, and number three, professional community. The group is quite large this year, which is excellent to see, and subgroups and area of focus were assigned. The next meeting will take place on November 1st, and I believe Mr. Caesaretti is attending on our behalf. I also believe we'll have an opportunity later this evening to approve the CRC members at large for this school year.
Great, thank you. And I went to the Educational Foundation meeting on October 18th, which many things were discussed. There are lots of events that they are planning, trivia night, which is sold out in very quick order, paddle classic, which they've done for a few years now, bingo, beers for cheers, and they're also thinking about some new events that are really exciting, maybe even finding ways for students to get involved and to learn about all that Educational Foundation does. They are meeting again on November 9th, at which point they will vote on the group grants, so that's an exciting and important meeting. And they're also voting to potentially change the bylaws so that the vote on the slate of the board of the Educational Foundation will require a quorum at 51% rather than a higher threshold. The quorum is in line with other voting requirements for the Educational Foundation, and this happens often one of the last meetings in the spring where it's harder to reach or harder to get attendance of more members. So that will all happen at their next meeting. Any updates, Mrs. Kim, from the Intergovernmental Working Group?
No. There is a meeting next Wednesday night, and I believe my colleague, John Caesaretti, is going to attend, so more news next month.
More next month. And IASB?
So there is no news to report, except that there was a North Cook Division meeting this Wednesday evening at ETHS for anyone who can attend. And I believe that at the next Committee of the Hall meeting, we'll be going over the resolutions that were proposed for the 2022 IASB Delegate Assembly. I think last year they sent us a hard copy of the resolutions.
They did, and interestingly, they didn't send them this year. Nancy and I were both talking about that, and I'm sure that we could request a hard copy if anyone on the board wishes. Otherwise, I suspect they're trying to acknowledge that most people are going green at this point. We could also simply print out a copy of what was provided. Might be useful for the delegate at least, so we can.
Well, I'll probably print out a copy for myself, but I hope that you all will have a chance to look it over by the next Committee of the Hall meeting.
We'll talk about it in November. Thank you.
Okay.
And I would love to update you on the legislation, but there is no news, except that I just wanted to mention that I attended the EdRed kickoff lunch earlier this month. And this year, there will be three advisory committees that are going to focus on school safety, special education funding, and communications. And I joined the school safety committee, so I hope that I'll be able to update you on some of their proposals throughout the year, so.
Wonderful, thank you. So that moves us to information items. I'll turn it over to you. Couple of things. We'll start with written communication that the board has received. The board has received written communication from Christopher Palumbo suggesting school nurses be equipped with Narcon, a life-saving reversal medication for opioid overdose, excuse me, from Nate Vander Kamp praising D-39 for not adopting the National Sexual Education Standards, and from Chase and Matt Martinick concerned that the National Sex Education Standards would be adopted in District 39. We have several administrative announcements, really just a handful this month. First of all, parent-teacher conferences, that signup is coming soon. Our fall parent-teacher conferences will take place November 16th to the 18th, which immediately precedes what we're considering our fall break this year, which is that Thanksgiving week. Conferences will be held via Zoom. We received a lot of really positive feedback from families about access, and the participation rates have been really outstanding through that modality, and so we'll continue that. Those parents who did request an in-person conference signup through a survey that closed last week have been scheduled accordingly or will be scheduled accordingly, but all parents will receive an email with login information for their conferences, and that email is expected to go out on Friday, October 28th. So we invite parents to keep an eye out for that and secure the appointment that works best for your calendar and possibly your travel plans. The conference signup will open on October 31st, excuse me, and close on Monday, November 14th, so there is a little bit of a window there, but I know some people really like to be in on the first day. CRC, we heard a little bit about the CRC meeting. On tonight's agenda, we have the members at large recommended to the board for approval. So as we've talked about, the Community Review Committee, or CRC, serves as an advisory capacity in our district to the Board of Education. They research specific topics that lead to improvements in teaching, learning, and managing the district operations. The CRC is requesting that the board approve Debbie Thilig, Allison Palace, and Najah Masaccio to serve as members at large this year on the CRC. We also talked about the School Maintenance Project Grant. I mentioned it here because it too is later on the agenda. ISB offers each school district the opportunity to submit one application for a matching school maintenance project grant. The grant amount is up to $50,000. Before the application can be submitted to ISB in November, the board is required to approve the application. District 39 is submitting an application for the project at Harper Elementary, with the work noted being to install outside air ventilation to a lower-level office, plus the addition of a chiller to provide AC in the remaining 13 classrooms. We have property tax assessment appeals. The Board of Education approved a resolution authorizing intervention in property tax assessment appeals filed with the PTAB and with the Circuit Court of Cook County in accordance with policies and limitations established by the Board of Education. The property index number and the estimated refunds are listed for new property tax interventions at the PTAB and the Circuit Court of Cook County this month. We have a few Freedom of Information Act requests that we have processed. One from Jody Cohen of ProPublica in the Chicago Tribune requesting Womet Community Special Education Agreement records showing the number of student referral incidents to law enforcement for the years of 2018 to 2019, 2019 through 2020, 2020 through 2021, 2021 through 2022, those school years respectively. Records showing the number of student arrest incidents by law enforcement for those years, records showing the number of incidents a student was cited or ticketed by law enforcement for an ordinance violation in those school years as well, and that has been responded to. Next, we have our strategic plan update. Move into it. Excellent. All right, well, we're really excited to share with the board and our community this year our IAR assessment results. Katie Lee has put together a presentation highlighting ours. As a reminder to the board and to our community, the statewide results will be released on Thursday, as will our districts and any other district throughout the state. Those results get released at that time. As is always our practice, we like to present these results to the board before that release date, so tonight is our opportunity to do so. I have been on several calls with ISB and with the state superintendents, learning a little bit about what we're seeing statewide, and I'll share that some of those key talking points really is that, as we know, growth slowed dramatically during the pandemic, and that was seen statewide, nationwide. Illinois seems to be celebrating that they've rebounded in 2022 and have slightly outperformed the 2019 growth, so that's really good. Performance levels still are lagging a little bit from pre-pandemic when we're looking at the state. We're really excited to share a few things about our data that have some positive outcomes. The state is also celebrating some of the college and career readiness improvements, as well as teacher workforce that continue to grow, which seems to be kind of defying some of the national trends. So while we still have some struggles in that regard, here in Illinois, we seem to be celebrating a little bit there. And a key area of focus for the state is chronic absenteeism, and so we have taken a close look at ours. I know across the state, many districts have taken a look at theirs as well, certainly impacted by the COVID pandemic throughout last year, and remembering that these data reflect last year's figures. So with that, it's my pleasure to introduce Katie Lee to walk us through her presentation.
Well, thank you. Good evening, board. As you know, this is a state mandated test, and the student reports arrived somewhat in the middle of September, and so families received their students' individual reports. And as Dr. Kramer Scully said, that this will be released with all of the other school report card information on October 27th. This spring of 2022 marks a third year of IAR in its consistent format for the, not just the format, but also the administration. Student performance is categorized into four levels, as you see on the screen. We particularly focus on levels four and five because they indicate the meeting expectations or exceeding the expectations set out by the standards. So this table summarizes the ELA results according to the levels by grade level. This was also included in the board report, the written report, and the next table summarizes math results as well. Now, the following displays that I will show you allows us to break down this information from a variety of angles. If you remember from all previous presentations, we like to share this data broken down by cohort or by grade levels from year to year. We think that that provides you with a picture of our journey over the years with our results. So let's start with the percent of students who meet and exceed over time, so that's that levels four and five that I mentioned. Note that each year represents a different group of students. When we discuss later, it will be the same cohort of students, but this is different groups of students. As I flip through these sides, you may notice that some of the 2122 results are either a little bit off, like 1% or equal to or higher than all prior years. It's really worthy for me to note that as we are emerging from the most challenging few years that we've had. So here's third grade ELA in math. Fifth grade. Just to note, the line graph that is, the line plot that is being displayed is the state Sixth grade. Seventh grade. And eighth grade. So another layer that we looked at in particular last year was to break down our English Language Arts section into its subclaims to analyze a little bit more into what we can focus on, what's our area of growth. Just as a reminder, IAR describes these subclaim performances with the terms higher, middle, lower descriptors. Higher is the same as a performance level of four or five. These are the subclaim categories for ELA: literary text, informational text, vocabulary, written expression, knowledge and use of language conventions. And I thought it would be worthy to remind the board and the community what our previous year's opportunities were. There were a couple of things that stood out to us. It was really the written responses in all the grades, grades three through eight, what they call a pros-constructed response, where students are asked to respond to questions of anything that either they read or a prompt in written form. And fifth grade ELA, with the percent meeting and exceeding, there was a sharp decline the previous year. With that in mind, we'd like to share with you the results of the subclaim for third And because this was a focus area that we have worked on, I thought it would be interesting to also show you, over the course of time, 2019, 2020, which we did not have this assessment, 2021, 2022, for written expression. And if you look at the blue, that is your levels four and five. This is third grade written expression. And this is third grade's knowledge of language use and mechanics. Fourth grade's all the subclaims. Fourth grade written expression. Knowledge of language use and mechanics. This is fifth grade's all of the subclaims. This is written expression. Fifth grade's knowledge of use and mechanics. Sixth grade's all subclaims. Written expression. Knowledge of language use and mechanics. Seventh grade's all subclaims. Written expression. Knowledge of language use and mechanics. And finally, eighth grade's all subclaims. Written expression over time. And knowledge of language use and mechanics. Last year, we also noticed that we did not do a subclaim analysis with math, and so we thought we would conduct one for you today. The subclaim categories were major content, expressing mathematical reasoning, modeling and application, additional and supporting content. And what you see here is side by side, spring of 2021 and spring of 2022 in those categories. Another way to look at this, because we are trying to see the percentage of students who met or exceeded the levels fours and fives, so this represents the two years, spring of 2021 and 2022, side by side for major content, expressing mathematical reasoning, modeling and application, and additional and supporting content. I hope you can see that why Carrie began with, "We are very proud to share with you our results." Here is fourth grade math. Two years side by side. Fifth grade math. The two side by side. Sixth grade math. The two side by side. Seventh grade math. Two side by side. Finally, eighth grade math. And the two years side by side. So upon looking at the year's results for last year district wide, we needed to assume a target, kind of similar to how we did the key performance indicators in order to say, hey, are we close? Or are we, you know, do we have a lot of room to grow? Or have we far exceeded? So we've assumed the target of 70% of District 39 students in levels four and five. And the process that we used is very similar to how Go1 produced their KPIs and looking at past data and trying to target a reachable, reasonable target, but it's still ambitious to, to reach. So in the table to the right, you will notice that there are three grades who have met the target of 70%, at least 70% of the District 39 students in levels four and five. And the grades that did not meet were awfully close and/or a little room to grow. So fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. So we'll go through each one a little bit for you. Although third grade did not meet the target, they had notable growth in writing. If you go back to that information on the slide or in your tables, you will notice that there was an increase in written expression. There was an increase in knowledge of language and use of mechanics. Due to that being our focus area, we saw that as a positive. And we feel that if we were to identify a growth area for third grade, we would look at literary text, informational text, and vocabulary, or just one of those to really focus in on and work on through the process that we have been. Although fourth grade met the target, the notable growth was not only due to writing. There was an increase in all of the areas. So I think that was really, that was really wonderful. But relatively, if we were to identify a growth area, we would say, you know, hey, let's do one more round of the knowledge of language and use and also written expression there. Fifth grade has met the target and the notable growth was due to writing, as you can see. So a relative area of growth for fifth grade was vocabulary. Sixth grade did not meet the target, but there was notable growth in literary text. And so a growth area that would be identified for sixth grade would be continuing with the written expression and knowledge of language and use of mechanics. Seventh grade met the target and the notable growth was in informational text. We have 78% in informational text in levels four and five. So I think a focus in this would be, a growth area for seventh grade would be written expression and knowledge of language and use of mechanics. And eighth grade did not meet the target and there was no notable growth for this past year. However, we would recommend that a growth area would be in written expression as well. For math, district wide, we assumed the same target, 70% of District 39 students in levels four and five. And third grade has met the target. Fifth grade was 1% off and fourth grade was 3% off. But staying true to the statement, third grade was the only grade level that has met that, that assumed target so far. They had notable growth in three out of the four subclaim categories. And if we were to identify a relative growth area, it would be the additional and supporting content. Although there was some growth in all subcategories, fourth grade did not meet the target, we would identify modeling and application as a subclaim to work on for fourth grade. Fifth grade had notable growth in three out of the four subclaim categories as well. The growth area is additional and supporting content, and they were so close to meeting our target. Sixth grade did not meet the target and the proficiency rate actually declined in the four subcategories. So we would want to engage in a discussion with the group. However, it's important to note that these are the fifth graders who struggled the prior year. So our sixth graders are working with them and meeting their needs from where they're starting. And we, they did struggle during their fifth grade year. And so they're continuing to work with them. So given that in mind, you know, I think this is commendable. And seventh and eighth grades did not meet the target and remained relatively consistent from spring of 2021 as far as results. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very comprehensive, exciting report. So thank you so much for that. Board members' thoughts, questions? Was anything surprising to you?
I think surprising in the most, the best way would be the hard work that our teachers have all put into making our students continue to grow across the board. I would say the grade levels that shared the most attention provided in, in, in helping students understand what the expectations of the IAR assessment, they grew the most. Fifth grade really stands out. I think it would for you. I don't know if you looked at the results from the prior year. I know that they're a different group of students. However, the teachers really band together, collaborated, talked about the assessment, their scope and sequence, how they were addressing content, really just conversations at that instructional level that really produced some results that we brought up.
To say, it has to be so exciting to have, you know, really targeted a particular area and to see how beneficial all that work. Yes, Mr. Trenzika.
I want to reiterate, thank you for all the work that goes into this. These are always big reports. I know you spend a lot of time on them. And, and obviously, the results show that a lot of improvement from the abnormal years or whatever you want to call those, the, well, more than prior. I mean, they're unusual years. That's probably better. So that, that, that's great. That shows that a lot of, again, a lot of work was put into it. I had two areas that, and, and one of them you've mentioned, but if you could just mention a little bit, because the 2021 data, the fifth graders in particular, at least from a test score standpoint, seemed to be an outlier and have significant issues. And I know there's two ways of looking at it, and you've addressed both of those. One was, there's something in fifth grade, and you've spent time making sure that this year's fifth grade, there wasn't any systemic reason. And it looks like the test scores for fifth grades are kind of in line with what they were before. The other is from a cohort standpoint, that for whatever reason, if the fifth graders last year had a harder time than they come into this year, a little bit behind. And I know you mentioned it a little bit, but still the sixth grade numbers, so that would be that same cohort, are, are still lower than, than we'd like them to be. And you did mention it, but if you could spend five seconds more on, on, again, like now they're seventh graders, so they're still trying, looks like trying to climb out. And how is that being addressed?
So first, I will say, for the sixth grade teachers, when, you know, they receive the fifth grade students and, and work with them from where they begin, if you notice that it is definitely not, it is more consistent to how other sixth graders have performed in the past, what they were able to help progress the fifth grade students to. So what I'm saying is, it's not a continued growth further or higher. But if you look at sixth grade's performance over time, they were able to take the group of students that maybe didn't demonstrate everything that they knew on the IAR during their fifth grade year, to be able to, at least on par with past sixth graders, produce the results that they're used to. What we now need to do is continue that climb. So I think you'll notice especially, or you, you may have noted that the written expression for sixth and seventh and eighth grade, we could work a little bit more in improving in that area. You know, we have some great reflections from prior grades that say, hey, how did you address this without compromising any true testing philosophical beliefs that you have? Because I think as teachers, to be honest, it's, it's a struggle to balance the, this is a one-time test and we want our students to do well. We want them to understand what is expected of them. But there's this fine line of conflict in our heads of how far do we go? We know that our curriculum works. We know our instruction works. But there's a certain level of, you know, how do we do this while keeping our integrity of not teaching to the test? And that's how it's just interpreted. Not that that's our intent or anyone's intent to imply, but that's something that has been a point of conversation. So in particular with sixth grade, I would say that the fifth graders were brought along almost on par with how other past sixth graders have performed. And so we will continue that work in seventh grade and in eighth grade to make sure that they're progressing. But in general, do we need to work in those areas? Yes. But I do think that our teachers are doing a wonderful job bringing them along.
Yeah, thank, thank you. And I know you're working on it. It's just, last year's numbers were so statistically different. It's good to hear that we're, we've made progress on that.
I truly commend the fifth grade teachers in looking at the data, reflecting on it, you know, coming together to create a plan and to execute the plan to see that. Because in, in general, we've been, you know, wanting fifth grade to do better and better each time. And this one is just astounding, the amount of, of progress. Even if you look at where they ended compared to prior to pandemic years, you know, they've exceeded that. And that's a really point of pride, you know, for them and kudos to them.
Fifth grade's a lot of transitions and how chaotic that year was, no matter, everything we tried to do, it still was chaotic year. If you're also having a lot of transitions and, you know, it can overlap. So, so thank you on that. And then the other one is eighth grade. You know, I, I understand the not teach to the test and, and that, fine, makes sense. But when we're down in the low 50s, that, you know, it's partly that, it's partly eighth grade, you know, ready to move on. But it also kind of hides, if there's anything else. I mean, when the number is that low relative to our other really high numbers, that consistently, it's some of those, but it could also be something else. And it seems like that's been a trend for a while, that these numbers actually are, even. What is the thoughts there? That's probably the best way around these numbers and what they mean and what they, how they could be more normalized.
Yeah, I, I think those are questions that we're asking as well. And I know that our, our team over at WJHS is looking at that as well. I think from a district standpoint, some of the focus areas that, and activities that we attempted to do last year maybe didn't translate as well at the seventh and eighth grade as, as we had hoped that they would have. And that's, those are some things that we need to work on. But we definitely, we, you, you are right. There's a number of things probably impacting these scores. We need to dig in a little bit further to figure out how to make some adjustments to improve those scores. The dip last year was somewhat expected, right? But to not see those grow a little bit this year is something we were, we too were disappointed in.
Historically, our eighth grade numbers were lower.
Yeah, it's a, it's a hard test for eighth graders to take at the end of their career here in eighth grade when they're getting ready to move on, but.
And there are a lot of factors, but in a lot of other comparable school districts, when you look at it, the drop off in eighth grade isn't as big in those schools. And some of that obviously could be teaching to the test. But again, you know, there's lots of factors. We want to make sure that some of the factors don't hide things that could be better.
You're absolutely right.
I can share with you that the building administrators and also the teachers are really engaged in digging into this data and just reflecting on, you know, kind of what they can learn from it and how to move, you know, toward improving. And I think all of those other factors play into it. We, we are, if I may, I will say, we need to do better. However, this is couched in, the older students during the pandemic had a bit more of a different resiliency, I guess, factor in coming out. So I'm curious to see how, you know, we do the following year. I do acknowledge, though, that this has been a pattern or a trend prior to the pandemic too. So there's just so many questions. There are just so many questions. And I think until we dig in and engage further into those discussions, just with some vulnerability and, and look into it, we would be able to provide you more. So.
Yeah, that, I know you're working on it. Just, it's our last chance with these kids before they move on. So if there is some, you know, if one of the factors is something that we can do better on, it's obviously an important place to think about.
Other board members?
No, I, well, I actually think you might have answered my question, which is, and maybe Frank kind of touched on this as well. But, you know, I was just sort of thinking during your presentation, which is cool, that, that if you had a group of kids, like if you have last year's fifth graders and you find out from the test that in this particular area, like say that they're kind of, you know, struggling as a class on fractions or something like that, is that something that impacts the curriculum for sixth grade then? Where you would maybe spend a little bit more time refreshing on that or?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Yes. Our, you know, one of the other things actually you bring up, Bonnie, is that, you know, in context, we take this assessment, this one-time spring assessment in March and April. Our year is not over. So there's much more learning that is happening. And what we don't want to do because of the test is to rearrange our units of study. But we do expose our students to some of the concepts where they just have a pre-exposed experience with the concepts that, whether it be in English Language Arts or in math, they have that knowledge to be able to answer the questions from. So we don't rearrange in that way. But instructionally, absolutely. In our day-to-day, our teachers are always in tune to, you know, what do our students know? What do they know? Majority of the students are still not getting it. We need to spend another day. Those are those instructional decisions that they make based on either formative assessments that are being conducted in class or, or just their, you know, the results of their homework, or just watching the students struggle with, you know, solving a problem per se, since you brought up fractions. So they will adjust the pacing. The one thing I will say that has helped some of our grade levels is to be really reflective of whether the scope and sequence is covered fully within a year. Sometimes exposure to concepts goes a long way with our students. But holding back on learning new content is, is actually the part that we should be really cautious of.
It's not a question. It's, it's more of a comment. Or, so I've been thinking about this all day and hopefully what's been swirling around in my mind will make sense. I like to think of things often in terms of trees and forest. And I feel like this data And I feel like this data represents some trees. And, you know, there were some trees, I was, you know, when I looked at the data, I was alone in a room and I said out loud to no one because I was alone in a room, like my reaction to some of this tremendous growth. And, you know, it was mind-blowing and it's a reason to celebrate, but I'm not discouraged about the groups that didn't meet targets or didn't grow as much, because I think about the forest. And for me, the forest is the educational practices that we have in our district. And, you know, as long as I've been paying attention to how this district does things, which goes back more than a decade, I've always been impressed with just how reflective the process is and how there's always groups of people trying to improve things. And I've said this before, I mean, I remember when my kids were in grade school, I thought the social studies curriculum was good. And then when it changed, it was like way better. And that's always going on. And I think you're always doing that. And in the past couple of years, with the new strategic plan and the creation of the DSAT, it's like amped up to a whole new level. So I think that on a micro and a macro level, you are seeking constantly to make improvements. And the lens you're looking through in places where there can be improvements, I mean, you talked in terms of last year's data as opportunities, you talked tonight about growth areas, you talked about digging into the data. And I just want to say that kind of attitude and mindset is one that I really appreciate and it's one that I share. And just that the amount of respect I have for the hard work of our administrators and teachers that use this data to drive their instruction, and there's way more data than this one test. It's just clear that you're doing what you're supposed to be doing and you're working your tails off at it. And I just want to say I have the utmost faith in your process. And so thank you for all of this and for being vulnerable about the areas where you can grow. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody want to follow that?
I'll be brave. So in the areas where you had tremendous success, is there a theme? What are the keys to success?
The keys to six of how to
Big growth.
produce higher, big growth. Quite honestly, it's breaking down the directions that are a paragraph for a paragraph and half-long, you know, that our students need to read independently and ask and reflect and then produce written pieces on. There, in the everyday classroom, very rarely, if any, would we provide two paragraphs of directions handed to a student at any grade level and say, go. But essentially, that's what we do when we give the IAR assessment. There are sections of the assessment that ask students to do that. So our sequence of units and teaching and learning did not change. It was this set aside time to take a prompt and break it apart for our students to see if they understand what is being asked of them. If I may be so bold and go back all the way to ISAT days, I don't know if you remember them. When we were back in ISAT days and I was in the classroom as a teacher, we used to be a lot more formulaic, write five paragraphs, make sure this first one includes this and the second one includes this and the last one includes this. And that was our approach in helping our students improve on the mandated assessment. This approach really is, we just need to give them a shot at knowing what's expected of them. And then after that, they're going to apply their knowledge and write how they write for us in the classroom. And so whether it be a graphic organizer that will help them organize their thoughts on a scratch sheet of paper, or the way they fold a piece of paper to make sure that they're understanding everything that's being asked of them, those types of little tips and tricks of how to, it's a test-taking skill, if you will, you know, how to address that, that's really what did it. I think in the areas of math, I would say it would be, hopefully, the pace, the scope and sequence of the curriculum at the grade level standards were covered. You know, they were introduced, they were exposed to the students from beginning to end. Oftentimes, when we want to be responsive to our students' needs, we pause and we spend more time. And there are years that potentially there's a particular concept that cannot be covered, we've run out of time. But something that was, you know, stressed upon was the importance of addressing all the standards at the grade level. So even if it was an exposure or an introduction at some point, and that seems to help.
Thank you so much. Keeping with the theme of academic assessment and Katie Lee presenting results to us, we also have our fall NWA MAP and AIMS Web Plus assessment data that we would like to take a few moments to review with you. Both Katie Lee and Kristin Swanson will be walking us through this presentation.
All right, we're going to start with the AIMS Web Plus data. There we go. So each year, our kindergarten and first graders take AIMS Web Plus. These are designed to be very short, quick little measures to help inform instruction for our students. Keep in mind, our kindergartners, this is kind of their first formal assessment, so it is quick and it's something that we use to really help identify those students who may need some additional intervention and help give our teachers an idea about where the students are when they're coming into their first formal educational setting. When we look at our fall early literacy measures, we look at three main areas for our kindergartners and first graders. Our kindergartners work on letter naming fluency, so that's the ability to read letters off quickly in a set time period. Letter sound fluency, which is the ability to say the sound each letter makes, again in a quick, rapid succession. And then our first graders work on oral reading fluency, which is reading a short passage aloud. We look at these again to do, gauge kind of where our students are and to identify those students who may need additional intervention or enrichment and help our kindergarten and first grade teachers know, what do I need to focus on right away as my students are first coming in? This is also one of our KPI measures that we use for the strategic plan. So we're sharing this data now. Again, it's the first time that our kindergartners have taken this kind of assessment, but we look at our children who are at or above average on this as part of our KPI. So for our early literacy measures, you can see that our, over 50% of our students in all three areas are falling at or above the average range, which is good. Our KPI is looking for students to be above that, and we'll get to that in a second. But this, again, is information that we're going to use to inform our instruction. Go to the next one, we'll talk about the early numeracy. We do not do early numeracy with our kindergartners in the fall, we do starting in the winter, so we'll use that information then. Our first graders, we look at math fact fluency and number comparison fluency, where they're looking at two numbers and identifying which is bigger or smaller. Again, we're looking to use this information to help us determine which students may need intervention or enrichment. And again, it gives us, our teachers, a quick gauge of where their students are as they enter the school year. So again, we're looking at students who are performing in the average range or above. And as you can see in math, our kids are coming in really about, over 75% of our students are in the average range or above for the math facts, which is great to see. And you can see that over time, our students have been doing well on that section. Sorry. So then as we look at our key performance indicators, we did update our early literacy because we did all of the assessments this fall, so we can see where we are on our track for spring. Our goal is 80%. Right now, we're at 77% of our students performing at or above the average range on those early literacy measures. In terms of math, because we didn't do the kindergarten kids yet, we won't update that section until winter. So that's kind of our early measures for our students.
And if you look on this KPI graphic, you'll see last, it says 71%. So wanted to show you the last was 71%, our current is 77, our goal is 80%. So kind of read it in that direction. And so we are back with NWA MAP assessment. Fall 2022 is considered a baseline data, excuse me. And as you know, you're very familiar that we do this three times a year, it's an assessment that helps us monitor progress over time and that students receive a RIT score at the end. This is a visual way to show you, you know, how the students are doing from second grade to eighth grade, but please keep in mind that under second grade, those are all individual different groups of second graders and third grade and so on. And the black bar is the national mean RIT. This is math. Maybe noticing a little peaks here and there. This is the table that shares with you the number of, the percentage of students performing above their grade level, national average, so at or above the 50th percentile on NWA MAP. And in the blue row is the current year. And this is by cohort. So our current second graders only have one bar because that is their start of the year. And our third graders in the past second grade fall and third grade fall and so on, all the way through eighth grade. This is for reading and this is for math. And then we share with you over time, the mean RITs fall, the mean fall RITs for second grade or each grade at reading and math. And you can see that they are pretty consistent across the board. You may notice as I go through the other grade levels, there might be a little jump here and there. So here's second grade reading. And for the last couple of years, NWA decided to cluster their subcategories into three categories instead of the number that you saw before. So in literary, in the past two years, literary text, informational text and vocabulary displayed for you. And this is second grade math based on their subcategories. And third grade reading and math for the fall. Third grade reading by subcategory. And the last two years of the subcategories clustered into three. Here's third grade math by subcategory. And fourth grade reading and math, the mean fall RIT. Reading in the subcategories that go from 2018 to 2020. And then clustered in the three categories for the last two years. There's fifth grade reading and math. Reading in subcategories for 2018 to 2020. And then clustered into three categories. Fifth grade math by subcategory. Sixth grade reading and math. Sixth grade by subcategory for 2018 to 2020. And then clustered into three categories for the last two years. Sixth grade math in the subcategories. Seventh grade reading and math. Seventh grade by subcategory for 2018 to 2020. And subcategorized into three. Seventh grade math by subcategory. Eighth grade reading and math. Eighth grade reading by subcategory 2018 to 2020. And then last two years into the three subcategories. Here's math by subcategory. I'm going to pause there. I know that was just riveting, visual displays for you. But really, the takeaway, I hope you can see, is that we have stayed very consistent, if not slightly better, in an assessment that our students are most familiar with because of the frequency in which they take it, although it is standardized. So as far as our mean RITs are concerned, and we really are keeping on track. If, I'd like to also note that this is pre-pandemic norms. We are continuing to, you know, put a ruler next to our students that was prior to any impact. The data that was retrieved to establish the fall 2020 norms had, did not have the pandemic years contained in it. So I think it's a, it's a high goal and that we have met. Okay, here are the cohort views again. Reading and math progressions. And we'll start with reading. And our goal is to show you in a line graph format visually how our students are progressing on an incline. So here is District 39 current second graders, the first time they are taking the assessment, and they are above the national mean RIT. Our current third graders fall. We're excited to see how they do in the spring. Our current fourth graders over time. Class of 2025, current sixth graders. Current seventh graders. And our current eighth graders. That was for reading, and now I will show you the same progression for math. Second grade. And eight. And so going along with our update for Goal One Key Performance Indicators, we were able to update the achievement indicators. Our growth indicators will come in the spring. So last in ELA with a goal 50% or more in the high achievement category, our last baseline was at 44, we are currently at 49% and our goal is 50%. We're very close. For ELA. And then for math, we had a higher goal, we had 55% or more in the high achievement category. Last time, we're at 48%, currently, we're at 51 in the fall and our goal is 55. For ELA, we also wanted 4% or less in the low achievement category. And the last time, we're at 5% and currently, we're at 5%. Our goal is less than 4% or equal to. And in math, 4% or less in low achievement category. We've achieved that, actually. The last time, it was 4%. We are currently at 3%, but we are monitoring how we do and we would like to continue to be at this rate for the spring. Happy to answer any questions that you have. As you know, there's really no analyses and trends as we are presenting this as baseline for the fall. So typically we don't go through a full synopsis. But in general, I would say that our students are performing pretty consistently, even through the pandemic, being compared to norms that were established prior to the pandemic. Our students are much more familiar with it, except with the exception of our second graders, are much more familiar with this assessment and understand, you know, what they're expected to do for each one, both math and for ELA. So we will be monitoring progress and providing new updates throughout the year.
Have a question, just a little different. You know, we're focusing appropriately on districts, trends and curricular needs as a whole. I'm curious to what extent, if much, these tests give you helpful information at an individual level? You know, are there, I know you look at students with so much richness. You know, what's happening day to day and other assessments that you do. But just thinking about, is it also occasionally helpful at an individual student level?
Yes, we present to you at a high level, district level information. What happens however, at a school level would be, the data would be disaggregated to the schools in particular, especially the four elementary schools that are brought together. Not only that, then they're looked at by grade levels. Not only that, are they looked at by teams of teachers? And then, and then even down to the individual student. So one thing that NWA MAP and I believe AIMS Web as well does is it will break down in an analysis per student. Which standards have been met and which they can, the student can continue to work on. So it's called a learning continuum where each are identified. So let's say, for example, I had an eighth grader who needed to work on standards that may have been from a previous grade level. That would show up on a report and the teacher could review all of that information and decide, oh, we could do an intervention or we could do a small group reteach at that level. So what, what is not helpful for the teachers, to be honest with you, is the actual RIT score. The actual RIT score is something that's just a numeric indicator that we present to you so that we can monitor progress in general. But the RIT score only provides you a number. So until we dig into what that RIT score means and then specifically to the student profiles, we wouldn't be able to target what a student needs to work on in order to, I don't know, gain a few RIT points or whatnot. And so those reports are much more helpful.
Very similar with AIMS Web Plus. It is designed to inform instruction. So teachers look at how their student performs. If they're doing the measures with them, they watch the errors that they make and the areas that they are succeeding in. And, and they can be, the AIMS Web Plus measures can be administered weekly if, if they need to so that they can gauge, they're very sensitive to progress and they are designed to provide that really quick feedback for teachers related to their instruction.
I'll just say something very quickly. A lot of information, a lot of work, obviously, and excellent presentation. So thank you and I appreciate all of the dialogue tonight. And I will just add to that, that I love seeing the KPI indicators and how clearly we're tying everything back to those in the strategic plan. So thank you for including that. Great to see.
Thank you very much. Lots of information. I think we're turning to annual business. Oh, yes, sorry. I thought all the hands were down.
Just a quick one. We've had the joy over the last many years of going to new tests because we had to, which unfortunately doesn't give us as much longitudinal data as we'd like. When, when we went to the MAP test, there was a lot of good reasons and we're hearing a lot of good reasons and certainly at individual student level, I think there's a lot of information. But one of the hopes, I guess maybe it's the right word, that MAP was also a way that we could do a little bit more comparison against other schools instead of just against state average, which realistically isn't a bar that, that has a lot of meaning for our school district. What, what is the status of being able to look at MAP data from our school versus other schools? Or is that one of those promises that has had that never been put down?
I was not here when the choice was made. Katie may be able to speak to it, but I, I don't. Within MAP, you can look at what they call similar schools. But what is more difficult to do is look at what I think you hope to do, which is to look at our chosen school districts data. And that, it isn't possible. We don't compare across the township and to go to those referendum group, school districts. Everyone presents their data a little bit differently. So there is, because everyone does present data, there are some ways that you can kind of do some digging and, and some comparisons if you want, but not maybe in the way that MAP would just say, oh, here is your data compared to these chosen schools that you would like to have them compared to. So you, you would need to go and do some digging and then see if they're presenting in the same way that we are. Katie?
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. We did investigate, Mr. Panzika, that report that you are speaking of. And when, when we talked to the representative over and over again, they could not guarantee what we were asking for. And so the cost, I can't remember exactly what the cost of the report was. But all you would be able to glean from a report like that is that it's a suburban district with somewhat of a comparable socioeconomic level. But there's so much more to the profile of our district along with others that I don't think it would capture or satisfy what you are hoping for or that what we were hoping for. And so I agree with Carrie with that.
Yeah, that it was, I don't think we knew, but when it was brought up, you know, when they're presenting it and you know, you get the anecdotal data and all that type of stuff, that was going to be one of the, probably would have gone to it anyway because it was better than what we were doing before. But it was one of those, oh, and by the way, now we can do this. And unfortunately, it doesn't look like that.
And what they consider similar schools might not be exactly what Frank, you're looking for in comparison across the township in preparation for Nutria High School. So that, you know, there's some nuances there that maybe don't make the data quite as available.
It was better than what we had before and it sounded like it was as good as we were going to get, but just.
And I think at this point, it's proven to be that way too, Frank. So I appreciate that point because throughout the many transitions of the state level assessment, we've been able to still look back at MAP and see some consistencies. And now through the pandemic, which certainly was a disruption, to be able to see where our students are performing compared to the pre-pandemic benchmark and compared to where our students were performing prior to the pandemic. Those are some useful indicators of our continued success of our students.
I can, I can see it's way more useful for the classroom teacher to consistency and frequency and, and detail. Unfortunately, that, that only leaves the, the IAR data with all its flaws being the only thing that actually can be looked at across schools.
Yeah, well, and unfortunately, the other thing I'll point out is, is one of the biggest headaches maybe of the IAR data for our teachers, for our administrators, as well as it comes back to us so late. That it, at MAP, you get those results right away. And for our teachers to know that they're disaggregating and really looking at that outcome data from students that they have no chance to do anything about really. It's, it's already a year behind by the time we get it. So yeah, all of that makes it useful to have a couple of different tools, not only MAP and IAR, but classroom assessments and classroom performance data as well to really inform what we're doing in classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, so we will move to annual business enrollment report.
Thank you. And for those following the agenda at home, the key performance indicators were discussed as we were going through that agenda item. So just wanted to make a note of that. We have the fall enrollment report and every year we're fortunate to have Tony DiMonte put this together for us. So I will let Tony give a little bit of background and some information here.
This year, there are 3,304 students educated in D-39 schools. Just to back up a little bit, we do this fall enrollment report every, every fall. And it captures the number of students attending our schools as of enrollment on October 1st. And historically, this data has been captured by the state for many, many years. So it provides a nice kind of long-term look at how many kids that we, we serve. Going back to what I was saying, there are 3,304 students educated in our schools. In addition, we also examine the number of students that we have a responsibility to educate. This number is higher as it includes early childhood students receiving itinerant speech here at the MEK, students outplaced at therapeutic settings and students receiving special education services at the local parochial or private schools. So our fall enrollment total is 3,356 students. You know, this is usually the point where Frank normally asks about the projections. I'm going to just beat you to it, Frank, and sell you next month. Will be that report that you're looking for. We always contract with Berger. And yearly, they take a peek at birth rates and crunch our numbers. Some districts only do that every five, seven years, but we take a look at our data every year and house sales and just variety of different factors that are here locally for us. Just, I was kind of looking at the fall enrollment data. And if you noticed, our numbers have been dropping. I believe it's seven years now in a row. I also went back and reviewed last year's projections. Again, we'll get projections next month. But this is about the time where we bottom. So according to those projections, we're about the bottoming out at this point. And we're going to follow a very small upward swing. I'm hoping next month that will reinforce that. But we knew that this was declining for a while, but we also knew there was a point, just, I kept saying it, in a couple of years, well, that time has come where we're going to start to trend back upward ever so slightly. So we'll take a look at that next month. You know, interesting, I was looking back at the charts. Something to further investigate and I didn't catch this really until recently. But in looking at the total number of students right around the year the pandemic hit, so there was definitely a drop in the 2020, 2021 school year, about 130 kids fewer that we never really recovered from. So something that isn't in the report, but I know something maybe we administratively will discuss further is where did those kids go? So that was interesting to note. But generally is, you know, I'm using the terms kind of drop and these are minor. I mean, our, our enrollment here in Womatt, if you look at it historically, it doesn't change that much. It ebbs and flows a little bit, but it's, it's generally around the same point. We're built out. There's no new construction. You know, families move out, but new families move in. So really, really what you're ending up looking at is birth rates. That's really what changes it. So next month, we'll take a peek at that. And hopefully we'll have fresh data that shows it trending upward. The other thing for next, not next month, but something to look forward to is another demographics projection report, if it's okay to mention, that we're going to go in with the other Nutria Township schools and use Jerry McKibben. And every school district in the, in the township is going to go in on this report. So it'll give some nice comparable numbers and Nutria will have some fresh numbers. The last time that I'm aware of that we did this as a township was back in December of 2018 where we had the Casarda report, another demographer. So it'll be nice to, although we review our numbers yearly, it's good for the other districts to take a peek at that, particularly after COVID and checking out some numbers that were heading into their kindergarten enrollments. But it's good for us to participate though with our peers because that gives a nice data set that we're all contributing to, which might provide some insight as well. And we'll take that hopefully in a few months, couple of months, compared to our Berger report that you'll see next, next month. And we'll see if there's much of a difference in the numbers. So it's also a nice double check to see if what we normally use as projections holds true with another demographer. So as far as fall enrollment counts, I'll entertain any questions if you have any.
Thank you. You anticipated almost every one of my questions. So yeah, I was going to ask about the 100 loss during the pandemic.
Yeah, it's about 130 that dropped.
And it didn't come back.
No, I, I mean, when you look at, you have the charts. I mean, it dropped about 130. We typically were, were less, we were about 30 or 40 fewer every year anyway. So it's, it's around 100, 90, 100 students that just left. And I'm not sure where they went. And once they leave, I'm not sure we know where they go. So was it homeschooling? Was it private school? Was it, I, I don't know. I, I'm speculating. So I'm just not sure.
Yeah, and the, there was a 10, 11, 12 year period where it was pretty stable and every year we'd come back and say it was stable. And it's dropped fairly consistently, like you said, over the last six years, but it's still only about 6% down. So that's.
It's not a lot.
It's not that much in the demographic numbers.
No, and our projections generally are holding true too. I did go back and analyze the last couple of years, like when we get that, you know, that Berger report and we were about, well, not about, we were 22 different between what they predicted and what we actually were this fall. The previous year, we were 19 different. So that report that you'll get next month is pretty spot on.
So in the long run, it's what's implications, right? The, the good thing we talked about once before is our, our funding is not that tightly tied to the number of students. So there isn't an issue that a lot of school districts have where, you know, you lose 100 kids and, and you lose a lot of money. So that, that's good and at some level, you know, percent drop in, in kids actually could be, if class size is smaller, maybe we have one less FTE, you know. So in the long run, the money part, not that big of a deal. The other place where people have gotten into trouble, what that could, is when a school demographic, a, a school demographic changed. Like they, they had a school that, you know, was 50% full because that neighborhood dropped off. So I always like to look at the four elementary schools. And they're all, they're up and down, but there doesn't seem to be any real trend there, which is.
No, last, last year's projections actually showed our four elementary schools trending upward, all four. Birth rates were increasing. So we, that's part of that upward trend. It's, so the good news for that is the investment that you as a board have made over the last few years in construction and as far as classrooms, I think was wise. And if we needed it a couple of years ago, we're certainly going to need it a couple of years from now. So I, I like to see that because it's, it was money well spent.
And so that, and having, so from an implication standpoint, obviously it's a good report and you've looked into all of it. But those are the two things that.
Yeah, there's a bunch of us that keep eyes on this. I know Heather looks at it for staffing. I look at it just for trends. And there's a few of us that look at it too. So we, we keep a close eye on our, on our student counts and truthfully, they don't vary a whole lot here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a number of board policies to review.
We do, in alignment with the board's desire to align everything as much as possible with press. We have many more than I could count policies recommended to the board today for first reading and review.
Are there any notes you'd like to make? I'm any of these? We're just looking for feedback at this point. Yes.
I had a couple of questions. For 6170, 6:170, I just, I, I see that what you were doing is adding, rather than having something, just say parent, it's parent and family. And, and then I was sort of like looking at the. at the, saw that in the district-level parental involvement compact paragraph, and looking at the one below that. I mean, by family and family, is that guardians, or is that, or is that something different? What does the "and family" add to the?
So without investigating it more than just reading it here, at the district level, it could have students at several schools, which would involve the whole family, versus at the school level, which is likely more just one student. I can look into that more, it's a great question. That would be my.
And I do think that your inclination is correct in that families are comprised of many different members, and I think this is an acknowledgement of the fact that families may be involved in so much of this, and not just, not just parents, not just the mom and dad, but a guardian, an aunt, an uncle, a grandparent who may live in the household. I've seen that shift in a lot of different policies and procedures, moving from parents to family. And it kind of, then, we don't have to say guardian and this and that, so.
Bonnie, is your point that it's not the same down below?
Yeah, I mean, I thought, you know, I was thinking that maybe there was a good reason, or I just wanted to understand. Your face is like, you're like.
Yeah.
But.
It's a great point.
Yeah, but maybe you could, or have lawyers take a look at that. I had a couple of questions.
Yes, continue on, for sure.
And so for 7:30, let's see. And then I was looking at under attendance areas, like the new language, which is in number two, and I guess, I'm not sure what that means, like what units mean. It says create new units. It's under, it's like in the.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I think units refers to school attendance areas. It is kind of an unusual insertion of a word, though. Thank you for the close read. It could just as easily, I think, be school attendance areas. Or existing units. It may also, units could refer to parcels, homes, specifically if we were to recommend a change to the attendance area of an existing home unit.
So that's what it means? It's referring to a home or a household, or?
I think it's referring to units in so much as the, either a home or a set of homes that are assigned to an attendance area.
This paragraph, Bonnie, below talks about, or revision of attendance units are open to the public, so I think that's in line with what Dr. Kama-Scholinger was saying in terms of this grouping of homes goes to a certain attendance area or school.
But we can do some additional research, because that is kind of a strange phrasing, so I appreciate your pointing that out to us. Let's see if we can just be more clear in that language, maybe there's.
I'm okay with that, like, if you know what it means, that's good enough. I was just a little curious as to, like, because it looks like it was like purposeful, like that that specific word was being used. So, okay. Can I just have one more?
Oh, okay, so this is for 7:130, and in the second paragraph, which is the part that's being added, I understand, well, maybe I don't, that I'm looking specifically at the last sentence, which defines non-instructional time, and it says non-instructional time means time set aside by a school before instruction begins or after instruction ends. But this is during the school day, right? So, I mean, is it just non-instructional? Like, I was trying to think, like, what is that? Is it like the five minutes in between a class, or is it lunch, or?
It would be that time in between classes, or the bell is ringing and there is a late bell, so there's a little bit of time potentially within that element. It's minutes, at best.
Okay, okay.
Might also refer to the lunch period, so the non-instructional recess lunch time.
Okay, I'm good with that. Thank you for clarifying that. And then I just, so under 7-270, I was just wondering if you could explain the, under self-administration of medication, like, it looks like the second paragraph was added, kind of, I think, discussing a qualifying plan. And so I just didn't understand what was being added that wasn't part of the first paragraph.
Can you point to the number again?
Sure, sorry, it's 7:270. It's under void policy, right? 270, I'm sorry, it's under, it's under the heading self-administration of medication, which is like the first page of 270, sorry. So I was just looking at that second paragraph that's, you know, kind of underlined and is being added. And I know there must be a reason why you're adding it, but I was just a little, like, to me, it says the same thing that the first paragraph does, and so I was just like wondering, or is it because qualifying plan is like a term of art, or it's like it's a specific thing?
Correct, and there's only certain types of medication that can be self-administered or self-carry. In other words, you can't bring over-the-counter medication, for example, and carry it on you. It's only these things that are permitted.
That go beyond the EpiPen and the asthma medication?
Yes.
Is that right?
Okay. So an example might be insulin for a type 1 diabetic.
Okay, thank you so much for clarifying. Appreciate it. Anything else? Okay. Yes, Mr. Panzika.
Thank you, Bonnie.
2:300, I thought we were going to have a discussion on that one, or it looks like it's still crossed out.
So I went back and watched the Committee of the Whole conversation that we had, and I thought that the direction of the board was to strike this and to go with 2:100. That was what I thought the direction was. Was my recollection, but I don't, we watched the Committee of the Whole.
I had to double check, so. What do other board members think?
No, John had some thoughts on this in particular, so she's not here, but this is technically the first reading.
Correct.
Okay, so.
So if we'd like more discussion, we can bring it back to Committee of the Whole in November again. We can, the board may still approve it under first reading today.
Right.
But if the board would like that opportunity for a more in-depth discussion, I would recommend that we put it on the agenda for discussion at Committee of the Whole, so that when we get to the second reading, we're not fiddling around with language at that point.
John had some specific wording in the original that he thought was important, so I don't want to represent him, obviously, the whole first reading.
Maybe since you already ripped the tape and you're putting what was in there, we could just roll with it, or maybe call John in between the meetings and bring it as that most.
I think that's right, and I'm happy to ask him. Certainly, I want to have conversation if there's a need, but don't need to keep putting it on the agenda if we don't need it.
Well, let's do that, then, if you could, or.
I will.
Frank wants to, just reach out to John and then provide us some direction as to whether or not to include it on the agenda at Committee of the Whole in November.
Happy to ask him, yes.
Yeah, I want to look at it one more time.
Great.
But for today, first reading.
Great, thanks.
Just to be clear, so you're saying you want it discussed? Because you were saying John wanted it discussed, so I was going to ask him.
I would like it discussed, but I think John has a stronger opinion than he wanted it discussed.
Why don't we discuss it now, Frank? Because.
Well, John's not here.
No, your issues. You're saying you have issues.
We're going to have it in the Committee of the Whole.
I was going to ask him. I wasn't assuming that, because we, I don't want to do that if it's not necessary, because you were saying John wanted it, so I was going to ask him if he wanted it discussed?
We're going to discuss it, right? Because we already had.
I will, I will make my thoughts.
Any other policy questions? Okay, then this brings us to the second opportunity for the audience to address the board. Can't see anybody here, so I will bring us to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, Ms. Stone, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated October 24th, 2022. I move to approve the fiscal year 2022 school maintenance project grant. I move to approve Debbie Thileg, Allison Pathless, and Najah Musachio to serve as members-at-large on the Committee Review Committee CRC. I move to approve as first reading of Board of Education policies, 2:100, board member conflict of interest, 2:230, public participation at school board meetings and petitions to the board, 2:300, employment of relatives of members of the Board of Education, 4:20, fund balances, 4:51, tuition fees, 4:140, waiver of student fees, 6:10, educational philosophy and objectives, 6:40, curriculum development, 6:65, student social and emotional development, 6:70, teaching about religions, 6:100, using animals in the educational program, 6:140, education of homeless children, 6:170, Title I programs, 6:180, extended instructional programs, summer school, 6:210, instructional materials, 6:240, field trips, 6:250, community resource persons and volunteers, 6:255, assemblies and ceremonies, 6:260, complaints about curriculum, instructional materials and programs, 6:290, homework, 6:340, student testing and assessment program, 7:15, student and family privacy rights, 7:30, student assignment and intra-district transfer, 7:60, residence, 7:90, release during school hours, 7:130, student rights and responsibilities, 7:150, agency and police interviews, 7:160, student appearance, 7:170, vandalism, 7:230, misconduct by students with disabilities, 7:270, administering medicines to students, 7:280, communicable and chronic infectious disease, 7:300, extracurricular athletics, 7:310, restrictions on publications, 7:325, student fundraising activities, 8:70, accommodating individuals with disabilities, 8:90, parent organizations, and 8:100, relations with other organizations and agencies. I move to approve to maintain as confidential the executive session minutes of March 14th, 2022, March 21st, 2022, April 11th, 2022, April 25th, 2022, May 16th, 2022, May, sorry, May 23rd, 2022, June 6th, 2022, June 13th, 2022, and August 15th, 2022. I move to approve to dispose of executive session audio recordings pursuant to district policy for May 11th, 2020, May 18th, 2020, June 8th, 2020, June 15th, 2020, July 20th, 2020, August 12th, 2020, August 17th, 2020, August 24th, 2020, September 14th, 2020, September 21st, 2020, October 19th, 2020. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between September 20th, 2022 through October 24th, 2022, in the following amounts. Educational fund, $716,932.43. O&amp;M fund, $71,636.88. Transportation, $240,898.57. Capital projects, $630,655, for a total, all funds of $1660,122.88. I move to approve the manual checks issued between September 20th, 2022, and October 24th, 2022, in the following amounts. Educational fund, $811,417.65. O&amp;M fund, $194,692.2. Transportation, $307.28. Capital projects, $2309,489.14, for a total, all funds of $3315,904.9.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll? Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
The ayes have it, motions carried. Old business.
I had one, I don't know if it needs to be business or not, but, and I think it's old, but we mentioned once or twice in passing, and some of the things absenteeism, and I know there was a while where that was one of the things that the district was tracking, and I was educated on how important it was. So I was just wondering if there's any, you know, trend information, anything interesting, any updates that would be appropriate in that area.
Thanks for asking that question. In fact, again, the state has made that an area of focus coming out of the pandemic. Unfortunately, looking at trend data is a little bit complicated right now because of the pandemic and so many choices that were, quite frankly, encouraged related to health and wellness. I will share that I know some of our schools, especially High Crest and WJHS, have sent out some reminders recently of the importance of attending school. We haven't seen trends to indicate that there are significant concerns, but it is something that we want to pay attention to, and again, especially coming out of the pandemic. I think everyone had some different attendance patterns that now we need to remind everyone that being in school is really critically important to our student success. So it's something we're keeping a close eye on, but the trend data right now wouldn't be meaningful for us to look at on an annualized basis.
That's fine, it just, it was one of those areas where the more I thought about it in these meetings, the more I understood how significant it was. And obviously, like you said, coming out of pandemic, whatever the top category, the extreme pruant or whatever, really correlates with unfortunate outcomes, so it is an important topic, so, okay.
Any new business? Good in welfare? Yes, Mrs. Dubbs.
Well, I just wanted to say that this morning, my sixth grader, he's in Mrs. Dubbs' class, and they did the High Crest weekly update, and it was so awesome to watch. I was like, just as happy as a clam. And what was so impressive with these kids is that, how confident they are. And, I mean, they were like little reporters, like short reporters. Like, I was like, are you paid? But, but also how comfortable they were. And it reminded me of when I used to go, when my kids were in elementary school at McKenzie, I volunteered all the time. I wasn't working, and I loved going in and seeing them in that environment and doing what they do. And every time I went in, I was like, oh my gosh, I wish I could give them more money. This is amazing. But, and I could see that, I mean, it's sort of few and far between, like, as they get older, but, you know, watching the, the news update today made me sort of reflect on the fact that it's like their home, the school, because they spend so many hours of their day there. And so not only are they learning all of this amazing stuff, but they just feel so comfortable there. And I just, it made me very happy today, so thank you.
Thanks for sharing that. Mrs. Hart?
Sure, I would just say, after not having many in-person activities at the schools over the past couple of years, it's been great to recently experience a few of them. I'm a big believer in the connection to the school and the students and the community plays a very large role in your overall experience with District 39, and to take part in them and also hear the positive feedback from the community is excellent, so I'm just going to highlight a few of my favorites over the past month or so. First, curriculum night at WJHS. I had no idea just how quickly these kids rode through the school, and everyone's trying to say hi to people they haven't seen in years, and, you know, in the hallway, so there's no time for that. But going through the kids' schedules, being in the classroom, talking to the teachers in person, walking the halls with many families, it was so well-organized, it was so positive. I can't believe how they keep everyone on, on track, and the night was just a big success. The Central Carnival was a great turnout. There was so much energy there, it was so positive. I saw, you know, new families, old families, and it was very great. Coldest alumni, Central alumni, who were coming back and either participating or volunteering. So just a wonderful event. And then, most important, volunteering in the cafeteria is always a highlight. So that was excellent. I did unknowingly sign up for Taco Day. I don't recommend, if you do grilled cheese, it's a lot easier than tacos, but it's just great to see the school in action and the students going through the cafeteria line like they did years ago, and navigating really important decisions outside of the classroom, like one or two tacos and lettuce or tomato, but, you know, this is all part of growing up and your experiences, so it's thrilled to see that. So just overall, grateful to everyone who made all of this possible and enjoyable, and feels great to be back.
Highlights. Thank you. Okay, do we have executive session?
We do.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, would the clerk please call the roll? Ann Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes. Motion carried. We are now adjourned to executive session.